Forward would now come to order, Madam Clark, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Calder.
Here.
Alderman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Valmer.
Present.
Alderman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Grass.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Here.
Alderman Howard.
Present.
Alderman Green.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg.
Here.
Alderman Rhodey.
Present.
Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Vucaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Navarro.
Present.
President Reed. President Reed. Alderman Tyus.
Here.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Mohammed.
Present.
Alderman Con. Twenty-three present.
Forward being present, we will be led today in prayer by Reverend Marcus Adams of Living Word Global Church. Reverend Adams?
Thank you, President Reed. Let us all present bow our heads in reverence to our Creator. Gracious God, we thank you for this opportunity to bring this great august body of leaders together once again to do business for the city of St. Louis. It is our prayer and our desire that it is your divine will that you continue to cover us and keep us safe and in good health during this COVID season. We thank you for blessing us to be supportive to one to another as we continue to look out for the welfare of the people and the citizens of this great city as we continue to reach across the aisles and find agreement among ourselves so that we can empower the city to move forward and grow and develop and make an impact not only within the city but within the region. Loving Father, we thank you the most just for being in our midst and because your presence is here today, we know that you're going to lead this meeting and bring the meeting of the minds together in a peaceful exchange while we do business. These are the things we ask in your precious Son's name and everybody says amen.
Amen. Amen. Reverend Marcus, I want to thank you for leading us in prayer today. Everyone, could you please join us in round of applause for Reverend Marcus?
Y'all blessed.
Also gonna ask if anyone will join me in moment of silence. I know Alderman Shemene Clark Hubbard lost her mother recently and I think it was a grandmother. Was it?
My godmother.
And a godmother recently. And you know, to all of the people who lost loved ones and all the people we lost last year due to violence in our city and what just recently happened on the, you know, on the Capitol and fact that we're losing 4,000 people a day now to COVID across this nation. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Before we move on, did I miss anyone or anything in the moment of silence? Anyone else before we move on? We dispense with line item three, introduction of our guests, introduction of our guests. Alderman from the twenty-third. As always, I'd like to have my friend Greg Meyer, who's listening in, as my special guest. Greg, welcome. Any further introductions, any further introductions?
Mr. President.
Alderman from the nineteenth.
I'd like to have as our guest, we have a strong senior community that watches us and our deliberations on a regular basis and have debate and discussion. So I, and they get me when they see me and ask me questions again, so I appreciate them staying on top of what we are doing.
All right, welcome to all the seniors.
Welcome all our senior living residents in the city of St. Louis.
Yeah, welcome to Hollywood.
Yes, yes, yes.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't get my hand up quick enough in that moment of silence. I'd like to add Capitol Police Officer Brian Sicknick, who succumbed to his injuries last night that he received protecting the Capitol.
All right, would everyone join a moment of silence for the Capitol Police Officer that lost his life and then, and also the others that lost their lives in that senseless violence that happened at the Capitol? Thank you. Thank you, Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Alderman from the fourth. Alderman from the fourth.
Sorry, good morning. I'd like to acknowledge my lead developer, if she's on this morning, Laura Hughes, as my special guest.
Welcome. Any further introductions, any further introductions, any further inductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Today is January eighth. On this day in nineteen thirty-five, Elvis Presley was born. But more importantly, this is the day that we celebrate the Alderman from the twenty-third's favorite color. This is Argyle Day. Thank you.
Yeah, first, before we begin, just welcome back, everybody, and it's good to see everybody made it through that break safe. Hopefully you enjoy it some of your time. I know it's an all of them, the calls continue to come in, things don't stop just because we do not have Friday meetings. So it's not like a typical break, but welcome all of you back. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated February, I'm sorry, Friday, December eleventh, twenty twenty.
Alderman from twenty-second, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for adoption and approval of minutes dated December the eleventh, twenty twenty.
Second, move on from twenty-second, second by all from tenth, in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailbox. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the La Colina Community Improvement District. The appointment of Mr. Mark Burrell, whose term will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The reappointment of Mr. James Hayes, whose term will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The reappointment of Mr. James Elsman, whose term will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I respectfully request your approval for the appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, the mayor.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on mayor's appointment to La Colina Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we approve the mayor's appointments.
Move by all from tenth, entertain, second.
Second.
Second by all from twenty-second and Alderman from the seventh. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Le Cleed's Landing Community Improvement District. The appointment of Mr. Brian Menjans, whose term will expire on December twelfth, twenty twenty-two. The appointment of Ms. Susan Trobman, whose term will expire December twelfth, twenty twenty-two. The appointment of Mr. Oliver Berger Jr., whose term will expire on December twelfth, twenty twenty-two. The reappointment of Mr. Victor Madison, whose term will expire December twelfth, twenty twenty-two. The appointment of Mr. Monk Soxso, whose term will, whose term, whose term will end December twelfth, twenty twenty-four. The reappointment of Mr. Jack Hor, whose term will expire December twelfth, twenty twenty-four. The appointment of Mr. Scott Scully, whose term will expire December twelfth, twenty twenty-four. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, the mayor.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on mayor's appointments to the Le Cleed's Landing Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to approve the mayor's appointments to the Le Cleed's Landing CID.
Second, move by all from the seventh, second by all from tenth, in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment, reappointment to the Art Museum Sub-District Advisory Board. The appointment of Mr. Keith Williamson, whose term will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The reappointment of Mr. Thomas Cornerhand, whose term will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, the mayor.
Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Art Museum Sub-District Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve the appointments to the Art Museum Sub-District Advisory Board.
Move by all one from the twenty-eighth, entertain the second on that motion.
Second.
Second by all one from the thirteenth and Alderman from the seventh, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Central West End Community Improvement District. The appointment of Ms. Rebecca Simcock, whose term will expire July first, twenty twenty-two. The reappointment of Mr. James Dwyer, whose term will expire July first, twenty twenty-four. The reappointment of Mr. Kyle Bozan, whose term will expire July first, twenty twenty-four. The reappointment of Mr. Paul Fila, whose term will expire July first, twenty twenty-four. The reappointment of Mr. Tripp Straub, whose term will expire July first, twenty twenty-four. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, the mayor.
Alderman from the, Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on mayor's appointment to the Central West End Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve the mayor's appointments to the Central West End Community Improvement District.
Second.
Move by all from twenty-eight, second by all one from thirteen, any discussion? And also the twenty-fifth, I think. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Clean Energy Development Board PACE. The reappointment of Ms. Shelby Watson Esquire, whose term will expire on May eleventh, twenty twenty-four. The reappointment of Mr. Sead Colton, whose term will expire May eleventh, twenty twenty-four. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, the mayor.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on mayor's appointment to the Clean Energy Development Board PACE.
Yeah, I figured I'd get.
Alderman from the seventh. Alderman from the seventh. You recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to approve the mayor's appointments to the Clean Energy Development Board.
Seventh, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Alderman from twenty-fifth, I want to make sure, on that earlier one, you were, you said, you seconded it also, right?
Correct.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Science Center Sub-District Advisory Board. The appointment of Dr. Gina Gunn McLendon, whose term will expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The appointment of Mr. David Behringer, whose term will expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, the mayor.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on mayor's appointments to the Science Center Sub-District Advisory Board. You're muted. Alderman from the eighteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President and the board of all the people. I move that, that we, that we approve the mayor's appointment to the Science Center Board.
All right, move by all from the eighteenth, was it, it was second, twenty-fifth, same by all from twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the DeBoliver Place Special Business, Special Business District. The reappointment of Ms. Sharon Beatty, whose term will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, the mayor.
Forward from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on mayor's appointment to the DeBoliver Place Special Business District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve the mayor's appointment, reappointment to the DeBoliver Place Special Business District.
Second.
From the twenty-eighth, second by all from the twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
That is the extent of report of city officials.
Dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Dispense with line items eight. Ten. Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-seventh, you recognize.
Yes. I'm sorry, yes, Mr. President. I'd move to suspend the rules in order to have first reading of Board Bill two thirty-seven, two thirty-eight, and Resolution eighty-eight.
Second, the move by all one from the twenty-seventh, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Second.
Any discussion at twenty-second? Twenty-second. Getting you, you too makes, your voices sound very similar. You sounded, yeah, that's why I keep asking if it's the twenty-fifth because you sound just like the twenty-second. Any discussion? It's been moved by all one from the twenty-seventh, second by Alderman from the twenty-second that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing the aforementioned board bills and resolutions. Madam Clark, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vucaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Twenty-eight, aye votes.
I vote stay in motion, Alderman from the twenty-seventh, and suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing board bills two thirty-seven, two thirty-eight, and Resolution eighty-eight. Madam Clark, please place the aforementioned board bills at the end of the first reading calendar and the resolution at the end of the resolutions calendar.
So noted.
First reading of board bills.
Board Bill two zero three, sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance pertaining to the Central Baptist Church located at twenty-eight twenty-four Washington Boulevard. Having as subject matter, the designation of the property as a city of St. Louis landmark containing definitions, landmark standards, and a severability clause. Board Bill two zero four, sponsored by Alderman Spencer and ordinance amending the redevelopment plan for Arkansas-Chippewa Marine Redevelopment Area. Board Bill two zero five, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated October second, twenty nineteen for the twenty twenty-five Agnes Street area. Board Bill two zero six, sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated December fifteenth, twenty twenty for the eighteen zero one Washington Avenue area. Board Bill two zero seven, sponsored by Alderman Spencer and ordinance relating to food preparation and handling to be codified in the revised code of the City of St. Louis, Chapter eleven point four-two, containing severability, effective date, and an emergency clause. Board Bill two zero eight, sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment Authorizing and Directing the Directive of Airports and the Control of the City of St. Louis, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport. To enter into and execute on behalf of the city, the lease agreement with the Boeing Company AL one seven six between the city and the Boeing Company contain the severability clause and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill two zero nine, sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook and ordinance authorizing the execution of a new lease agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and CSF Lewis and Clark Terminals LLC, a Delaware, Delaware Limited Liability Company for a period of two and seven months with a one-seven-year and two-five-year mutual options for the purposes of parking automobiles and the storage and interior receiving, processing, and storing and transloading of cargo and or warehouse distribution center for products at twenty-two twenty-six North First Street, containing severability clause. Board Bill two ten, sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance approving the amended petition related to the Olive West CID finding a public purpose therefore and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill two one one, sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook and ordinance approving the petition to establish the Clarence Broadway CID finding a public purpose therefore, contain the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill two one two, sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the City of St. Louis a non-binding preferential vote authorized by Article Two, Section Nine of the City Charter to vote on the question of whether the city should close the Division of Corrections Medium Security Institute in order to assist the Board of Alderman, Mayor, and Comptroller in the management and direction of the Medium Security Institution. Board Bill two thirteen, sponsored by Alderman Evans and ordinance approving a blighted study and redevelopment plan for the North Newstead College, I'm sorry, Cottage Whittier Page and Redevelopment Area. Board Bill two fourteen, sponsored by Alderman Todd and ordinance designation, designating a portion of the City of St. Louis, Missouri as a redevelopment area known as Kingsway Commercial Redevelopment Area pursuant to the real property tax increment allocation redevelopment area. Adopting and approving a redevelopment plan, adopting and approving a redevelopment project with respect thereto. Adopting tax increment financing within the redevelopment area, making findings with respect thereto. Establishing the Kingsway Commercial Tiff Special Allocation Fund, authorizing certain actions by city officials and contain the severability clause. Board Bill two fifteen, sponsored by Alderman Todd and ordinance authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and Kingsway Development LLC prescribing the form and details of said agreement and authorizing other related actions in connection with such agreement and contain the severability clause. And Board Bill two sixteen, sponsored by Alderman Todd and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment Authorizing and Directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed six point nine million dollars plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes. Series twenty A B of the City of St. Louis, Missouri prescribing the form and details of such notes and the covenants and agreement made by the city to facilitate and protect the payment thereof, prescribing other matters relating thereto and contain the severability clause. Board Bill two seventeen, sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated January the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one for the thirty-six zero one through thirty-six zero nine Lindle Boulevard, Boulevard area in the City of St. Louis. Board Bill two one eight, sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service of the City of St. Louis establishing multiple public works and improvement projects within the City of St. Louis. Board Bill two nineteen, sponsored by Alderman Howard and ordinance approving the petition to establish the forty-three fifty South Kings Highway Community Improvement District establishing the forty-three fifty South Kings Highway Community Improvement District finding a public purpose for the establishment of the forty-three fifty South Kings Highway Community Improvement District. Making certain findings with, with respect thereto, authorizing certain actions of city officials and contain the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill two twenty, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard and ordinance approving a blighted study and a redevelopment plan for the two thousand through twenty twenty North Broadway and two zero zero one North Second Street Redevelopment Area. Board Bill two two one, sponsored by Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Collins Mohammed, Alderman Vucaro, Alderman Davis, Alderman Murphy, and Alderman Green and ordinance to amend City of St. Louis revised code so as to permit the Board of Trustees of the Fireman's Retirement System to simultaneously act as the Board of Trustees of the St. Louis Firefighters Retirement Plan but not until such time as amendments to, amendments to Missouri Revised Statutes eight seven point one four zero, eight seven point one four five, eight seven point one five five, eight seven point two six zero, and eight seven point three five zero has become to permit the Board of Trustees of the Fireman's Retirement System to simultaneously act as the Board of Trustees of the St. Louis Firefighters Retirement Plan and contain an effective date. Board Bill two two two, sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard and ordinance prohibiting discrimination in employment and housing decision, including without limit- Including without limitation hiring advancement and compensation and discrimination in housing practices. Based upon an individual's hairstyle, protective hair, or natural hair, or cultural hair texture or style. Board Bill two twenty-three sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. By prohibiting the use of alleys by operators or motor vehicles. For drive-through traffic in the following neighborhoods, Kingsway East, Kingsway West, Penrose, excluding the portion of Penrose Neighborhood in the twenty-first ward. Mark Twain, excluding the portion of Mark Twain Neighborhood in the twenty-seventh ward, containing a penalty clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill two twenty-four sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus. And ordinance creating a senior citizen parking zone and a senior citizen passenger loading zone. Providing the mechanism of a creation of senior citizens. Parking zone and senior citizens passenger curb loading zone permits. And authorizing the city to establish a special senior citizens parking zone and a senior citizen passenger curb loading zone. Containing the penalty provisions and the severability clause. Board Bill two twenty-five sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for the Riverview Boulevard. West Florescent Avenue, Lilian Avenue, and Alcott Avenue Redevelopment Area. Board Bill two twenty-six sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd and ordinance amending ordinance seven zero nine three-two concerning recreational fires to prohibit recreational fires in the location. Other than a backyard or side yard so long as the recreational fire is not visible from an adjacent public way other than an alley. Board Bill two twenty-seven sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirteen nineteen and thirteen twenty-one Benton Street. And twenty-five hundred North Fourteenth Street Redevelopment Area. Board Bill two twenty-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance pertaining to income which is exempt from city earnings tax. Repealing ordinance six five zero nine four, removing any exemption on any income received by a person in the form of or related to the grant. Vesting of exercise of stock options, performance shares, or performance-based stock-related incentive plans. From the city earnings tax and containing that emergency clause. Board Bill two twenty-nine sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance amending ordinance seven zero two three eight. Directing the directive streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic at Polly and at the west curb line of Union Boulevard. Containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two three zero sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance amending ordinance seven zero two three eight. Directing the directive streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic at Colt Brilliant. Seventy-five feet of the west curb line of Union Boulevard and containing that emergency clause. Board Bill two thirty-one sponsored by Alderman Todd and ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of North Sarah and Westminster Place. Regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on North Sarah at the intersection of North Sarah and Westminster Place and containing that emergency clause. Board Bill two thirty-two sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any packaged or drink liquor licenses. For any currently unlicensed premises within the boundaries of the first ward. For a period of three years from the effective date thereof, containing the exception allowing. Allowing during the moratorium period for the transfer existing licenses under certain circumstances and containing that emergency clause. Board Bill two thirty-three sponsored by Alderman Orion and ordinance requiring the municipal court to assess a seven-dollar surcharge for state court. Automation in addition to any other court assessed by the court in cases in which court in which causes are assessed. Board Bill two thirty-four sponsored by Alderman Calder and ordinance authorizing and directing the treasurer of the City of Saint Louis acting in her capacity as the supervisor of parking. To enter into a real estate sale contract to sell one zero one four Spruce QOZB LLC. Certain real estate belonging to the City of Saint Louis located in city block zero four three four and generally known as ten fourteen Spruce Street. Authorizing the treasurer and other city officials to enter into. A parking license, a memorandum of license, and a development agreement. And granting such further authority to take such further actions as are necessary to effectuate the real estate sale contract. And containing the severability and emergency clause. Board Bill two thirty-five sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated November seventeenth, twenty twenty. For the Natural Bridge North Grand Saint Louis North Van de Vanda area. Board Bill two thirty-six sponsored by Alderman Collins Mohammed and ordinance amending ordinance seven one two five seven. Approved December eighteenth, twenty twenty, changing the initial rate of levy set forth in section one, paragraph B. To seventy-five cent and change the and changing the election day set forth in section ten to April second, twenty twenty-one. Changing the initial rate of levy set forth in section ten to seventy-five cent and placing the ordinance number and the date of its approval. And board bill board bill number in the official ballot language set forth in section ten and containing that emergency clause. Board Bill two thirty-seven sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd and ordinance directing the directive streets to make such changes. In the present traffic pattern, controlling traffic on Thrush Avenue in the forty-four. And forty-five hundred blocks of Thrush Avenue between Thackler and West Florescent. So that as reconfigured, the traffic pattern developed in place as a result of changes directed by this ordinance are as follows namely. Thrush Avenue fifty-four hundred block and fifty-five blocks, hundred blocks. Traffic to flow one way northeast between Thackler and West Florescent. Board Bill two thirty-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Murphy. The bill amends ordinance six seven one one nine to prohibit employers and labor organizations from advertising. The individuals of a certain age, race, creed, color, sexual orientation, gender, identity, national origin. Religion or disability or not accepted for employment or membership. And to prohibit landlords from declining rental applicants because they are victims of domestic dating or sexual violence or stalking or construing such violence. As a violation or cause for termination of lease. And to allow landlords to bifurcate leases to remove offenders and allow victims to remain. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Madam Clark, please assign two thirty-seven to streets and two thirty-eight to HUD.
So noted.
Reference to committee.
The. To the following committee, the public safety. Board Bills two zero three, two twelve, two two one, two two six, and two thirty-two to the Neighborhood Development Committee. Board Bill two zero five, two two zero, and two two seven to the HUD's Committee. Board Bill two zero four, two zero six, two thirteen, two fourteen, two fifteen, two sixteen, two seventeen, two twenty-five, two thirty-five, and two thirty-eight. To Health and Human Services Board Bill two zero seven to Transportation and Commerce. Board Bill two zero eight and two zero nine to Ways and Means. Board Bills to ten, to eleven, to nineteen, to twenty-eight, and to thirty-six to Streets Committee. Board Bills to eighteen, two thirty-four, two twenty-four, two twenty-nine, two thirty, two thirty-one, two thirty-four, and two thirty-seven. To the Legislation Committee Board Bill to Board Bills two twenty-two and two thirty-three. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of HUD with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one seventy sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment Authorizing the City of Saint Louis, Missouri. To issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds in one or more series in a total principal amount of not to exceed six-point-seven million dollars. Board Bill one seventy-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard and ordinance amending ordinance number seven zero five zero one. Approving and authorizing the execution of a first amendment to a redevelopment agreement between the City of Saint Louis, Missouri and Alteria Jefferson Arms LLC. Authorizing other related actions and contain the severability clause. The following board bills were reported out of Streets Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one fifty-seven sponsored by Alderwoman Ngracia and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface. Surface and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in an irregular portion of Pine Street from the western right. Right-of-way of twentieth street to the western right-of-way line of the twenty-first street in the City of Saint Louis, Missouri. As herein after describing accordance with Charter Authority and conformity with section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter. And imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one six one sponsored by Alderwoman Ngracia and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface. Rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in a twenty-foot wide east-west alley in the city block six four seven two. Beginning at the twentieth street and extending westwardly to its terminus and bounded by Olive on the north, twentieth on the east, and Pine on the south in the City of Saint Louis, Missouri. As herein after describing accordance with the Charter Authority and in conformity with section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter. And imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one seventy-three sponsored by Alderwoman Ngracia and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights. For vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in a triangular tractor of land located on the northwest corner of twentieth street and pine. And the same area was previously dedicated as per playbook thirty-four, page thirty-eight in the City of Saint Louis, Missouri. As herein after describing accordance with Charter Authority. And in conformity with section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one seventy-seven sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate. Above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in Second Street from Tyler. South in the City of Saint Louis, Missouri as herein after describing accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with section one four of Article twenty-one. Of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one eighty sponsored by Alderman Todd and ordinance establishing two two-way stop sites at the eastern and western intersection of Whittier Street. And Washington Boulevard regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Washington. At the eastern intersection of Whittier and Washington Boulevard and regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Washington. At the eastern intersection of Whittier and Washington and contain that emergency clause. Board Bill one eight four sponsored by Alderman Collins Mohammed pursuing to ordinance six eight nine three seven. And ordinance authorizing the honorary street name of Dorothy Jackson Johnson Way, which shall begin at the intersection of Carter Avenue. And Alice Avenue and run north on Alice Avenue to the intersection of Alice Avenue and West Florescent. Board Bill one nine seven sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance repealing ordinance five nine zero four three approved on February the tenth, nineteen eighty-four. Which closed Swan Norfolk and Vista Avenues at the east line of Taylor. The ordinance authorizing and directing directive streets to reopen Norfolk and Vista Avenues, but to keep Swan Avenue closed and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one nine nine as amended sponsored by Alderman Calder, President Reed, Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Boyd, Alderwoman Martin, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Ngracia, Alderwoman Boyd. And Alderwoman Middlebrook pursuing to ordinance six eight nine three seven. And ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Kim Massey Way, which shall begin at the intersection of North Broadway. And Convention Plaza and run south on North Broadway to the intersection of North Broadway and Lucas. Board Bill, the following board bill was, board bills were reported out of public safety. With a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one ninety sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer. And ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment Authorizing and Directing the Mayor and the Comptroller. Of the City of Saint Louis on behalf of the city to enter into and execute an agreement or agreements with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Office. Of Healthy Homes and Lead Hazard Control being offered pursuant to the federal fiscal year twenty twenty. Notice of funding availability for the lead hazard reduction demonstration grant program. And directing the comptroller to issue warrants thereon upon the city treasurer and contain that emergency clause. Board Bill two hundred sponsored by Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Mohammed, Alderwoman Howard, and Alderwoman Boyd. And ordinance approving a contract between the City of Saint Louis and Persistent Surveillance Systems. Doing business as community support program and directing the Saint Louis Metropolitan Police Department. And other city officials to enter into contracts and any related agreements and contain that emergency clause. Board Bill two zero one sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderman Vocaro and Alderwoman Howard and ordinance authorizing and directing the Chief of Police. On behalf of the mayor and the City of Saint Louis to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the Missouri Department of Public Safety. Office of Homeland Security to fund the twenty-twenty operation alleging grant program upon approval of the Board of Estment and Apportionment. And to expand funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill two zero two sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderman Vocaro, Alderwoman Howard, and Alderman Mohammed. And ordinance authorizing and directing the Chief of Police on behalf of the mayor and City of Saint Louis to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the Missouri Department of Public Safety. Office of Homeland Security to fund the twenty-nineteen Project Safe Neighborhoods Program. Upon the approval of Estment and Apportionment and to expand funds by entering into contracts. Or otherwise for grant purposes and contain that emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of Transportation and Commerce with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one sixty-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment Authorizing and Directing. The Director of Airports and the Comptroller of the City of Saint Louis owner and operator of Saint Louis Lambert International Airport. To entering, enter into and execute on behalf of the city, the assignment and assumption of interest in lease agreement AL two three zero. And consent of the City of Saint Louis between Spire, CNG. A LaCle Venture Corp. If terms are more fully described in section one of this ordinance, contain the severability clause and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one seventy-one sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estment and Apportionment. That provides for financial incentives for air service at Saint Louis Lambert International Airport containing the severability clause and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one seventy-two sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission. And the Board of Estment and Apportionment providing for the transfer. Of six million dollars that the city, I'm sorry, one million dollars that the City of Saint Louis, the owner and operator Lambert. Saint Louis Lambert International Airport intends to transfer. From the Airport Development Fund through the Airport Contingency Fund into the Airport Revenue Fund. Contain the severability clause and contain that emergency clause. Board Bill one eighty-three as amended sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment. Authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller of the City of Saint Louis owner and operator of Saint Louis Lambert International Airport. To enter into and execute on behalf of the city, the O H M Concession Group LLC. Local concept food and beverage first amended and restated concession agreement. AL one two zero between the city and O H M Concession Group LLC. Granting to concessionaires subject to, subject to an accordance with containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill one eighty-five sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment Authorizing and Directing the Director of Airports. And the Comptroller for the City of Saint Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the City of Saint Louis. St. Louis Lambert International Airport first amendment to its airport use and loose and lease agreement and when applicable its airport use and loose agreement with cargo addendum containing a severability clause and containing that emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety six sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook and ordinance authorizing the execution of a new lease agreement between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and United Fruit and Produce Company of Missouri Corporation for certain land at or near two two six North First Street and then, and in the city for a period of five years with four or five year mutual options containing the severability clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Specials Committee COVID nineteen. Board Bill one nine eight sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman and Gracia, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderman Colder, Alderwoman Middlebrook and Alderman Bucaro. An ordinance authorizing and directing the acting director of the city of St. Louis Department of Health to execute, accept a two hundred thousand dollar grant from the National Foundation for the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, Inc. with the project name of COVID nineteen Care Kids for Faith-Based Communities and known as Project One Zero Eight Five containing emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
Dispense with line item fourteen and fifteen. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill one six two committee sub sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderwoman and Gracia, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderman Todd and Alderman Norrion. An ordinance pertaining to electric vehicle charging stations, amending ordinance seven zero seven nine four which adopted the twenty eighteen international building code as amended and codifying said changes in chapter twenty five of the revised code of the city of St. Louis and contain a severability clause, savings clause and an effective date.
Alderwoman from the twenty eighth, you recognize on perfection of board bill one sixty two committee substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we perfect board bill one sixty two committee substitute.
Second about Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, there, there, I'm just going to talk about board bill one sixty two, but there are three bills today on the perfection calendar that all involve electric vehicle charging and these are, are all updates to the building code. And I, what I first just want to say about the opportunities that electric vehicle charging provide for our city is that, you know, one, this bill is going to help us address air pollution from vehicles in our city, reducing our carbon footprint and helping advance our sustainability goals as a city. We do have a clean energy advisory board that has been putting together reports through, you know, President Reed's bill that committed us to reducing our, our greenhouse gases, reducing our energy usage and their efforts have put, prepared a, a report on energy pathways to, to cleaner energy for the city and pushing an electric vehicle charging is one of the recommendations that came out of there. And so we've been very lucky through, um, through our new climate advisor that was provided through a grant that we received a couple of years ago through Bloomberg Philanthropies. We've been able to get expertise to help us draft these bills and update our building code. And I think what's really important to, to recognize is that by twenty thirty, we could have up to thirty percent of the vehicles in St. Louis as electric vehicles. And prices for these vehicles are coming down all the time. They save drivers about sixty eight hundred dollars in fuel costs over the life of the vehicle. And the biggest barrier to purchasing these is finding a place to charge. And most people do charge at home travelers when they're mapping out their, their road trips. They're looking for the cities where they can find EV charging stations and St. Louis of, of the, the fifty largest cities, St. Louis is lowest on the list when it comes to number of chargers per capita. Kansas City is at number three and several other of our similar cities are, are outperforming us when it comes to the availability of EV charging. And what we know is that installing these chargers at the time of construction, not even the chargers, but just even making a space EV ready is much, much cheaper to do that on the front end than, than doing it later. So board bill one sixty two amends the building code regarding new construction for commercial buildings and it sets out goals for solar readiness, or I'm sorry, not solar readiness, EV, electric vehicle readiness and electric vehicle installed equipment. And so what we're asking is what the, what the building code would require in terms of making, um, having electric vehicle ready spaces. So this is really just providing the conduit, um, being ready so that if somebody wants to install a soul, uh, an EV charger at a later date, all of that infrastructure is there. And so it doesn't kick in until January one, twenty twenty two. Um, so this wouldn't go into effect for almost a whole year. And what we're asking is, um, what, what this bill would do is just require that when you're building a parking lot. So we're talking about, um, you know, at least in, in multifamily, it'd be five spaces or more commercial, ten to thirty and it's all laid out. There's a nice chart in the bill there that shows you. So EV ready would be one space. So again, that's just laying the infrastructure, um, installed spaces wouldn't be required until you've got a much larger parking lot. So looking at, um, you know, thirty one spaces, um, and up for commercial. If you've got a parking lot of more than twenty one spaces for multifamily. Um, and so that's, um, board bill one sixty two. Um, I also want to mention that there are rebates available. Um, Amrin right now will provide up to five thousand dollars per charging port and up to twenty thousand for the fast charger. So there are ways to help builders, um, bring the cost down on these. We also, the building code, um, we also have exceptions in there for places that have high turnover. So it's the idea is you plug this in while you're sitting at your desk job or, um, you know, wherever you are. So restaurants, daycare centers, places like that that have high turnover would be exempted from, um, from this, this update, from this change to, to the building code. Um, this is very similar to, to what we did with the solar readiness last year. So again, just making sure that our construction is ready, our buildings are ready so that we can adapt to this new technology and make it easier for people to be able to purchase these cars. And then we get the benefit of the reductions in, in air pollution and the reductions in, in energy usage. Um, so I, I really urge your support. There's been a lot of great work that's been, um, that went into this bill. We had some great conversations in committee and I think this is a really great step for St. Louis, um, to help us serve our residents better and also help attract, um, more business, more travelers, um, to our city and help us be ready for, for what's coming. And it's, um, very, very low cost. Um, I will just share with you to do this, um, upfront. I mean, we're talking about, you know, hundreds of dollars for a larger parking lot. Can tell you, so like to get EV ready, um, we're looking at, you know, maybe seven hundred dollars for a Walmart mount in a, in a parking garage. So the, the expenses, it could be four to six times higher than that if you do it after the fact. Um, and I'm happy to take any questions. It's obviously a topic that I'm very excited about and I think it's a really great move for our city and we're lucky that, um, we've been able to have the expertise to help us amend our building code in this way to take advantage of this technology.
All right. Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board and thank you to the Alderwoman from the twenty eighth for all your hard work on this. Um, I'm just asking to be added as a co-sponsor on, uh, all three of the solar, or, of, all three of the bills today. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Alderman from the twenty third.
Yes. Well, the Alderman from the twenty eighth, uh, pose for a question, just.
All of them from twenty eighth, we yield to Alderman from the twenty third.
Yes.
Alderman from twenty third, please proceed.
I, I, I just when you were talking, it caught my attention. So would someone like Schnucks, like a grocery store or Target, are they going to have to install, uh, these charging stations since they got parking lots that are larger than, so, so for instance of, um, you know, Schnucks and, and all these, uh, stores that are in the city, are they, are they going to have to put these in?
So grocery stores are not on the list, specific list of exemptions. I'm checking right now, but, um, but they do have employees. So, I mean, if you've got, um, I mean, there's a fair number of employees that would be at a Schnucks parking lot. Actually, this, I do know, the Schnucks on Clayton Road already has two or three of these installed. Um, and that's one thing I think that I think is important to point out is that in a lot of places, the market's already driving this. And so we're essentially setting a baseline for the city of St. Louis. But we're, we're already seeing grocery stores put these in. So, you know, we didn't have any requests for, um, for, for, for grocery store exemptions. And let's see, and it actually just during, um, I think maybe during major renovations, but yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying to get more clarity, but that's standing. Right now they're already installing them.
So if, if it already exists, like Schnucks on Hampton, for instance, already exist, they don't have to install them, but if they.
No, yeah, if you already exist, you don't have to put this in. It's, so this, so one sixty two is only for new construction. So if there's a new grocery store going in and they're doing a new parking lot, um, the only time a grocery, an existing grocery store, so board bill one eighty one, which we'll talk about, deals with existing and only if they do major renovations. So anybody who's not, this only applies if you're building or if you're doing, um, and then one eighty one addresses major renovations, but we're not going to go to any grocery store and say now because this bill has passed, you have to put in electric vehicle charging.
Okay, that, that clears it up for me. I guess I just. Thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Uh, Alderwoman from twenty six.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Alderwoman Navarro for your work on this. I had constituents reach out to me and they were excited about this legislation. So I don't have any questions, but I would like to add, uh, be added as a co-sponsor to all three of the bills. Thank you.
Please make know that. Alderman from the twenty first.
Hey, thank you so much, Mr. President. Will the Alderwoman from the twenty eighth yield for a question?
Alderwoman from twenty eighth, will you for questions? Alderman from the twenty first.
Yes, of course.
Alderman from twenty first, please proceed.
Hey, thank you so much, Alderwoman. Uh, just real quick, and the Alderman from the twenty third touched on it about construction and major renovations. And you did say that that's any upcoming board bill after, right?
So the way the building code is set up, so there, there are three bills dealing when, with one issue of electric vehicle charging because there are three different building codes to be amended. So one sixty two has to do with new construction for commercial buildings, which includes multifamily. Um, renovations of commercial and multifamily buildings is dealt with in board bill one eighty one.
Okay. So, so this is my question. If, if I already own, uh, a home and, and I'm, and I want to renovate that home, let's say I want to build or I want to renovate a garage or I want to do an extension to that home, would I be required under law to, to, uh, uh, instill these electric charging stations?
So under board bill one sixty three, which is the next one, that one has to do with the residential code and that would require, starting in January of twenty twenty two, one electric vehicle ready, um, outlet. So it's essentially, it's a dryer outlet is what would be required in, in new construction. Um, you would have to, you would have to put that in. And there are certain exceptions. If you have a, um, a detached garage or a carport that's fifty feet away or more, then there would be an exception for that. But if you're building a brand new home, um, this would require, I mean, along with the other list of things you have to do under the building code, you'd have to have this additional outlet, which is the equivalent of a dryer outlet, um, that would be available. It doesn't require you to install an electric vehicle charger, but just that you have the electrical capacity ready to go if somebody at a later date wanted to, to install that.
Gotcha.
But that, again, that's board bill one sixty three. One sixty two is just on the commercial side.
Absolutely. Well, I will, uh, I will hold back until that board bill comes up. Thank you so much, Alderwoman. Uh, no further questions, Mr. President.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderwoman from twenty eighth, recognize to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and, and thank you all for, for your excellent questions and I renew my motion to perfect board bill one sixty two.
The move by Alderman from twenty, second by Alderman from the ninth, that we perfect board bill one sixty two committee substitute. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
Board Bill one sixty three committee sub sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderwoman and Gracia, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderman Todd, Alderman Norrion, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderwoman Green and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance pertaining to e- electric vehicle charging station amending ordinance number seven zero seven nine five which adopted the twenty eighteen international residential code as amending and codifying said changes in chapter twenty five of the revised code of the city of St. Louis and contain the severability clause, savings clause and an effective date.
Alderwoman from twenty eighth, recognize on perfection of board bill one sixty three committee substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we perfect board bill one sixty three committee substitute.
Move by Alderman from twenty eighth, second by Alderman from the ninth in discussion. Alderwoman from twenty eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. So one sixty three, as, as I mentioned, regards the residential code. And what this would require is again, starting January one, twenty twenty two, um, all new construction would be required to have one EV ready, um, you know, outlet available, um, space. So, and there are exceptions, as I mentioned a minute ago for, um, you know, if you've got a detached garage or some sort of off street parking carport that is more than, more than fifty feet away, that would not be required. Um, but to make this space EV ready, it's essentially making sure that the electrical panel and the wiring and the, the conduit are there and electric, you know, a, a dryer outlet essentially is what is, is required to be installed. And then in January, starting January one, twenty twenty four, um, this would apply to phase three renovations. So essentially if you're rehab, gut rehabbing a house down to the studs, um, then you would be, um, required to put in this outlet, um, at that point. But what this bill says is starting in January one, January one, twenty twenty two, we're just looking at new construction, very similar to what we did with the solar readiness bill where we said, if you're going to build a new house in the city of St. Louis, um, you've got to just have this, this base, these basic pieces of infrastructure so that someone could install this technology to later date if they wanted to. And it's much cheaper to do that at the front end, you know, when you're constructing or when you're doing a gut rehab than it is for somebody to come in after the fact and, and install that technology later. I believe we pretty much covered all of the points, um, on that. And I guess the other thing I will mention too, is that most charging happens at home and, um, and that, and as I said before, the biggest barrier to people purchasing these vehicles, um, is the fact that they don't necessarily know where they're going to, to charge. And we are seeing a lot of, um, there are many residential developments. I talked to developers across the city and, um, you know, a lot of them are already doing this because the market demands it. So, um, they were, you know, people have been very appreciative that we're setting this baseline in the city of St. Louis to make this, to make this available. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Alderman from the seventeenth. Alderman from the seventeenth.
I'm sorry, uh, forgot to unmute myself. Uh, thanks, Mr. President. Alderwoman from the twenty eighth, I, um, appreciate all your work on this. I did have a couple of quick questions and maybe I missed this. Is this only for single family homes or is this for?
Alderwoman from the, uh, twenty eighth yield for questioning.
I'm sorry, forgive me. Uh, would, would the Alderwoman from the twenty eighth yield?
Yes. The Alderman from the seventeenth, please proceed.
Uh, yes, Alderwoman, I just, uh, uh, I, I may have missed it in your, is this for just single family homes or is this for, uh, multifamily developments as well?
So the residential code, which board bill one sixty three amends is the red, is the residential. However, multifamily, um, it's four families and up is, um, is covered under the commercial code. And, um, so, so this would deal with, you know, single families, duplexes, um, that's covered under board bill one sixty three. Yes.
Okay. So if somebody was building a large, you know, apartment complex or something like that, what, that would be covered under the other one? Is that correct then?
Correct.
And I'm sorry, I must have missed it. How, how, what would, you're just, in that case, they would have to provide outlets for how, how, all the cars or, or just, uh, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I missed.
No, that, no, it's okay. It's, it's a good question. And there's, there is a, um, there's a chart in the board bills, um, and, and I, and I can run through it real quick, but it, so for, for, well, are you asking, you're asking about the multifamily?
Right. I guess I'm off topic a little bit here, but I think it's somewhat related. But it would be for every you, it's not for every unit. It's just.
No, it's not. So for example, for multifamily, um, if you've got between five and twenty spaces, you'd have one EV ready space. Um, if you've got twenty one to forty nine, you'd have two EV ready spaces and one EV installed space where you actually have the charging equipment there. And then, um, fifty, if you've got fifty spaces and more, then you'd be looking at five percent EV ready and two percent installed. Five percent E V ready and two percent installed.
Okay, my only other question or concern, and I'm sure you're far more knowledgeable than I am, given your background on. Um, kind of what the best practices are going forward in this area. Um, my only concern is, um, I I do believe there's going to be. A a very big movement away from, um, private car ownership. And, uh, I'm just concerned that we're locking people with a large expenditure on something that may end up not. You know, the idea of everyone owning electric cars or owning a car period going forward. Um, I think at some point is going to be diminished, and I was just a little concerned about. You know, driving up the cost of our new construction. It's, I, it sounds like it's just a couple hundred dollars. Is that correct, Alderwoman?
So, um. So if you're looking at, you know, new construction and and here, let me pull out. So, you know, for multifamily and and commercial, if you're doing this as new construction, you're looking at. Um, you know, maybe seven hundred fifty dollars for a wall mount in a parking garage. So, I mean, that, if you're doing a large development, I think that's that's a relatively small cost compared to the whole thing. If you want to do it after the fact, I mean, you're looking at fifteen hundred, I mean, at fifteen hundred dollars. So doing this upfront is obviously.
I I certainly don't have a problem with the large developments. Uh, it's more the the cost for this, you know, i- i-
Well, yeah, the cost is the same. So it's it's seven hundred fifty dollars, whether it's a small parking lot or a large, I mean, and I, and this is an estimate. You know, this is after surveying other costs. Um, and and we are looking at panel capacity, conduit, wiring. So the costs aren't, I mean, we haven't found that the costs for this are are exorbitant by any means. I mean, it, and it, and it. And and for the developers that, you know, we've talked to, that I've talked to you so far, um, you know, they they find that it's very much worth it. You know, whether it's for their employees or their res- you know, if it's a housing complex, they've got. Um, people who are demanding it. I may have had other people call me and say, this isn't enough, you know, we we need to have more than this.
No, I I I certainly understand where you're coming from for the larger developments. I mean, that's a very, you know, for a large project. Uh, uh, I I guess I'm just a little concerned about. Uh, about the single-family homes, the cost for those, and, um. Uh, I I think there's going to be a period where, you know, we're going to see. A a reduction of the amount of internal combustion automobiles in a a period of time. Where electric is going to replace those, and then I think we're going to see a time where. Electric autonomous vehicles that are not going to be individually owned are going to end up replacing those, and so. You know, and and I'm not sure what the timing or the sequence of all that's going to be, and I just. Worry that we lock ourselves, now, I I'm in support of it and plan on voting for it, I was just. You know. Yourself into something that that may end up being. Kind of a temporary, uh, I wouldn't call it a fad, but I mean, uh, uh, and. A point of inflection where where technology is going to be changing so quickly that, um, we're kind of getting married to something. Or we're attaching our billing code to something that that will be obsolete before it's widely, um, available, but, uh, anyway. I still plan on voting for it, I just wanted some clarification. Thank you.
Alderman from the third.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um. The Alderwoman, you have a question?
Oh, I'm from the twenty-eighth, may you have a question to the Alderman from the third?
Yes.
Alderman from the third, please proceed.
Thank you, um. So as far as the commercial cost, uh, for, uh, this, the the exact cost, are you saying that is? Is seven hundred and fifty dollars for the commercial installations also?
So, so for commercial, the estimates that we have for doing commercial, which I I I will just say for residential. To make, um, to add E V readiness to residential, the cost estimate that we have is around three hundred eighty dollars. So I just want to let everybody know, if you're building a new home, we're talking about less than, you know, five hundred dollars. For commercial. Um. The estimate that we have there for for new during, you know, seven hundred fifty dollars for. If you're doing a wall mount in a parking garage, if you're going to do a pedestal mount, um, which is located farther away from the panel. Um, the estimated cost for that is about two thousand, which could be ten thousand if you do it after the fact, but at the time of construction, it would be. Um, our estimate is around two thousand.
Okay, and that's for the residential, right?
No, that's commercial, residential is about three hundred eighty dollars. I mean, so well under five hundred dollars. To do this at the time of construction, we're just at, you know, you're adding another outlet, um, that could could service a. A future electric vehicle charging equipment.
Okay, um, so I just want to point this out, um, are you familiar with the different levels? Um, of of, uh, outlets or electrical connections that they have? So I think that you're only referring to a level one, which, uh, which is one of those chargers that actually take. That's one of the longest charging times. So when you get more on the commercial, uh, part of installing these. Uh, electrical outlets, there are levels to them, and the higher those levels go up, the quicker your battery charges. And it gets much more expensive also. So, um, you know, at some point in time, I'm sure that most. Uh, commercial installations will not be, uh. Going for the lowest amount of of charging time, they probably want to go as soon as. As, uh, how would I say, is, uh, want people's cars to get charged as quick as possible. Um, I I think we need to identify that there are are levels to the, uh, the different electrical outlets that are there. Because those costs could significantly change, uh, and that's from the residential and the commercial side. Based on, uh, the coming years and how this technology phases in and out. We don't know exactly what's going to happen in the next four or five years. I don't think the level one chargers are going to exist for very long. Um, I think that this is very new. Um, with it being, uh, commercially driven and everybody is finally getting to trying to be carbon neutral and, you know, trying to be energy efficient. Um, there will be, uh, of course, there's billions of dollars that that just got pushed into the economy for research. And a and a lot of development in these things to bring down the cost. Um, but that also puts us in a particular place where we cannot identify what's happening unless we do enough research. To know what's coming down the pipeline for these technological sectors. There is a monopoly on a lot of it right now, but that will change. Especially as Chinese cars, uh, become, uh, yeah, Toyota, there's a lot of them making, uh, electrical vehicles now. But I know those chargers will change over time, so it's very important, I think, when we are putting stipulations on. Uh, commercial buildings or commercial development, residential development, we have to pay attention to the five-year mark. Because if we're going to do this in two years, and there's billions of dollars that just got dumped into infrastructure in this technology. Um, things may change significantly over the next coming years when this becomes more of a more household commodity. And I also want to point out that, um, uh, as we look more into, uh, electrical vehicles. There also is a push right now that is much, much bigger. Um, and I guess I can say that from a personal standpoint, but, uh, you also can do a little bit of. We all can do a little bit of research on the different renewable energy sources that are coming out. There are going to be hydrogen fuel cars also. That are actually, uh, becoming more of a dominant part of the market right now, because they're a little easier to build. And they, uh, present, um, customers and car owners. With a a much easier way to, uh. Keep their car on the go. Of course, you have to stop and charge your car that can take hours to do so. Uh, with this different technology in particular, uh, you know, we're reducing, uh, carbon almost to to zero. You know, carbon emissions to zero with, um, uh, with hydrogen. So I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. But, um, that is what Biden's campaign is all about. They have just, uh, released billions of dollars into the sector also for. Uh, research on hydrogen also. Um, so I think that is going to be a mega player. Uh, when it comes down to us significantly changing these automobiles that we utilize that are combustible right now with with just gas. Um. That is, I I think at some point in time, um, we may come into some type of a conflict. Because you'll have people just like they are deciding, uh, you know, yeah, different cars or manufacturers that you like to go to. There'll be differences in what you'll be deciding, uh, to utilize in form of changing, uh, the vehicle that you. You know, that you're driving as far as going either electric or going with, uh, with hydrogen. So. Um, that could get, once again, expensive for homeowners if they want to have a hydrogen car and they don't want to have an E V car. Um, that, you know, could. Put them in a particular mindset, and it can turn people away at the same time. So, um, I know those things were not kind of discussed and and talked about. But I do want to, you know, put those things out there for us to pay attention to as we kind of move forward. And trying to make our city city more energy efficient and reduce our carbon emission, our footprint, or our different technologies out there. You know, I want to, uh. Follow the sentiments of Alderman Rhodey there, um, you know, locking ourselves in into one technology and putting ourselves in a place. Where we know that that is going to dominate the market. Um, uh, I I think. Especially right now with things being so low, we don't have a whole lot of manufacturers out here that are building these, uh, these, uh. Uh, what is, what is the word I'm looking for? These, these, uh, car ports where you can come charge a car, these, uh, these electrical charging stations, I'm sorry. You know, so the ones that I've seen personally right now from BP and Amarin, I haven't seen any other private entities in the city. Uh, uh, building them, I haven't seen any manufacturers that are from the city or around the state. It's, uh, the same monopoly that has monopolized on the energy sector in the city for, um, the existence of the city. So have, do you know of any other, uh, providers that will be able to? Uh, or that are interested in 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 building these charging stations right now, other than Amarin U E?
Well, Amarin, um, I mean, Amarin provides rebates. I mean, Amarin does have some of their chargers, but there are a variety of companies out there. That are, um, building electric vehicle infrastructure. Um, one thing I did want to mention is these are phase two chargers, and this is just a minimum, this is just a baseline. So, you know, those folks who want to put in, um, high-speed, higher-speed charging, um, they they can do that. And Amarin's rebate does, it's five thousand dollars a carport for these phase two, and then it's a twenty thousand dollar rebate. If you do one of those hires, if you want to do one of those higher speed charging. So I just want to let you know, this bill does take into consideration. There are different levels of of technology for that, but in terms of, um. Yeah, the man, I I don't have the manufacturer's list off the top of my head, but I mean, I know these things are going up like crazy all over the rest of the country. Um, and and you know what, in some of the gas station, I mean, I know, like, yeah, I mean, BP's looking at putting in their char- chargers at the gas, the gas stations. Tesla has their chargers for their, for their cars, but then there are a variety of other companies out there, Blink and, um, other ones. That, um, you know, you can, there's a variety of different ways to do it. I don't have an electric car yet, but, um, you know, you have credits. And as you travel around, you can charge up at different places, and I do think that this technology is evolving, and I think that's an excellent point. And, you know, if in five years, something has changed, we can always go back and amend and and we're not asked, you know, this isn't. Requiring people to to make, you know, incredible investments where in terms, especially for this residential code, it's. It's an electric piece, and I think we're still going to see a big growth in electric vehicles. I would love to see, you know, hydrogen cars, I know it's out there. I know people are big advocates for them, but I think we're going to see more electric vehicles on the road before we'll, um, be in a position to start. Um, you know, getting people hydrogen ready. That would be great. I love it. We'll be here having conversations, having conversations for that. But I do know that the, you know, the E V industry is is starting to boom around the country, and St. Louis is lagging behind. And as we put, as we build, um, and as we build and renovate, it just makes sense to do this small thing. Um, to really help boost our ability to to compete and to serve our residents.
Right, I understood, and the reason I brought that up, because it's it's very, so ninety percent of people, like, right now, we spoke about the. Some of the folks that are working those grocery stores, um, like, you know, a lot of us don't have, uh, and may not have. Access to the capital to be able to afford an electric vehicle, even with the the rebates and all those things that exist. Um, but, I mean, there's a lot of money out there for hydrogen cars right now, and they are being utilized in, uh, California, there are hydrogen fill-up stations. Um, one of the holdbacks that has been holding that industry back is the access to, uh, hydrogen. And, um, you know, once again, this, we just released a lot of money last week and the week before, uh, as a country to. Uh, you know, explore and fund this sector, so. Um, you know, just want to make sure that we are very, very, so, but I I like the idea that you are willing to go back to the drawing board. This does become something that is is a hindrance, and I, you know, that commercial space, there is a lot of development going on on the north side of St. Louis. We haven't been privy to for some time. I think we'll have, uh, hundreds of millions, if it's already billions of dollars that will be invested over the next couple of years. Um, um, there are smaller developers right now that have really, really big issues coming up with an extra twelve thousand or an extra twelve hundred dollars. Um, especially when you do business with the city, um. And I, and I definitely don't want in any districts that I'm in or, you know, any commercial, uh, large commercial development projects that we have. Uh, definitely don't want e- even a thousand dollars or fifteen hundred to be an an issue or a problem when it comes down to us trying to build these commercial spaces. So I just, just want a commitment to being able to work with you all as time goes on, and we do have developments go on. If these things do become small issues, we just have to figure out how to make them work for those small developers also.
No, I.
Does not. Sorry, go ahead.
Yep, sorry, I didn't, yeah, I mean, I I I agree, and I I think that, um, I think we'll be building on this. And I just also want to mention that there's always an appeals process through the building division. If there is some burden. Um, or some reason why this really won't work for somebody, they always have the opportunity to go to the building division and and appeal. Um, so that that is always, that option is always out there.
Alright, I have, uh, no further questions. Thank you, uh.
Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion? All one from twenty-eight, you recognize the close on, um, perfection perfection of Board Bill one sixty-three committee substitute.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. I I remem- I, again, thank you for all of these wonderful questions, and I renew my motion to perfect Board Bill one sixty-three committee sub.
The move by Alderwoman from twenty-second, by Alderman from ninth, that we perfect Board Bill one sixty-three committee substitute, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Board Bill one eighty-one sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, Alderman Gunther, Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Green and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance pertaining to electric vehicle charging stations amending ordinance number. Seven zero seven nine seven, which adopted the twenty eighteen International Existing Building Code. As amended and codifying said changes in chapter twenty-five of the revised code of the city of St. Louis. And contain the severability clause, savings clause, and an effective date.
All one from twenty-eight, you recognize perfection of Board Bill one eighty-one.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I move to perfect Board Bill one eighty-one.
Second.
All one from twenty-eighth, uh.
Second.
Second by Alderwoman from the thirteen. Alderwoman from the twenty.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for your your patience as we discuss this topic today. So Board Bill one eighty-one is regarding, um, existing. Buildings under the commercial code, which includes multifamily with, um, over four units. So, um, the way the building code works is there's one code for new construction, for commercial multifamily, and there's another code for existing. So dealing with renovations. So, um, this bill is regarding phase three renovations. Um, of of those commercial and and multifamily, um, buildings, so over, um. Face, uh, face two, I'm sorry, o- over, um, four units. Um, and so this would say in twenty twenty-five, um, so. So phase three renovations, um, starting in January one, twenty twenty-two, there's a certain number of E V ready. And E V installed spaces based on the size of the parking lot. And again, the chart is in in the bill, but, um, essentially, if you've got. You know, a a medium-sized lot, um, you'd have one E V ready space. Um, and then as you get bigger, there'd be a requirement for one E V installed space and two E V ready spaces. And then for those very large parking lots of fifty or more, um, looking at at five percent E V ready, two percent E V installed. Um, phase three, so that, that's, um, and then, and then in January one, twenty twenty-five. Uh, for multifamily phase three renovations, um, we would, um, just bump that up a little bit. To to, um, to be able to adapt to the growth in the industry. And so, again, you can see in the chart there, um, if you've got five to twenty spaces, then you'd be required for one E V spot. Um, twenty-one to forty-nine, um, so actually, it would pretty much stay the same. We're just saying. Um twenty-one to forty-nine, um so actually it would pretty much stay the same. We're just saying big parking lots over fifty, that number would bump up in twenty twenty-five. So it's really the, the only thing that happens in twenty twenty-five is bumping up those large parking lots for large multifamily developments. So we're talking about fifty parking spaces or more. So same information as before. Um but this is amending the building code to deal with existing buildings. And so anytime someone's doing a phase three renovation. So if you have a large building right now, you don't have to do anything. But if you do some sort of gut rehab down to the studs, um then we would be looking, um then, then you'd have to comply with this code.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? All along from Nate.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize. I don't have the option to raise my hand in the box over here. So uh thanks for, thank you for seeing it.
Uh go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, Ms. President, I would, I'd just like to thank Alderwoman Navarro and uh the building division and um the, the Bloomberg folks, uh the grant uh folks, everyone who's been working on all of this. And I would like to be added as a co-sponsor to this bill, please.
Madam Clark, please make note of that and all along from Nate. Uh in further discussion, in further discussion.
Mr. President.
All along from nineteenth.
I'd like to add my name to the, as a sponsor for the bill, please.
Madam Clark, please make note of that. Um all along from the twenty eighth, you recognize clothes.
Uh my, my hand was up.
Uh Alderman from the third.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh Alderman from twenty-eight, you have a question.
All along from twenty-eight, we yield a question to Alderman from the third.
Absolutely.
All along from third.
Thank you, sir. Sorry to interrupt. Um can you explain what a phase three renovation is? I understand it's all the way down to the, the studs, but I mean, that's, can you be a little more uh as technical with, with what that means? Some, some folks would consider a, a renovation all the way down to the studs, not really that big of a deal. We do a lot of those, of course, on the north side right now. A lot of these houses have not been touched in a very long time. You go in, we got this, you got a harsh hair in the walls, newspapers from the nineteen forties, stuff that hasn't been kind of moved out. Um and some people do keep that, uh it's not supposed to be there. Some people keep that old knob and tube wiring in there if it's not, and it hasn't been having a mess with it. But some people go in, you know, they can knock things out, you know, pretty easily without taking, you know, the entire walls down. Like what, what is an exact phase three renovation, just so we can have that on record?
So I can get as technical as I can. I'm not a, a building inspector. Um but I think getting essentially, I mean, everything I've been told, this is getting down to the studs. So you're ripping out the walls. And the idea is that you're laying, you're laying this wire, this conduit, you're installing a um, you know, an outlet that wasn't there before. So the idea is that you're already, you're, you're back down to the studs right where you would be, you know. You're at the, the phase where you would be if you were constructing this a- as a new um thing. So you know, you're remodeling your kitchen. Um you know, that's, that's not gonna be it. It's not gonna be these small, these small things. It's you're back down, you're in a position where you can easily lay this wire and install this, this outlet. Um I mean, that's about as technical as, as I can get, but that's the idea, is to make this as easy as possible on people. And so we're not asking you to, we're you know, we're asking you just to do what you would do as if you were building this, if you're in that same stage as if you were building this from the ground up. At the, at the point where you would put in the electrical, this is where you would, you would do it.
Okay. So, so in the event, like you said, I'm, I'm remodeling the kitchen, I tear all the walls down, get it completely gutted out. That's a small remodel under, uh this is not a phase three under this legislation.
Well, I mean, you're not gonna be installing, I mean, unless you're parking your car in your kitchen. Um you know, I, I, I think it's gonna be, you're doing a phase three of the house. Um and you're, you know, you're, you're putting this in. That is, that is my understanding. I do want to correct one thing I said earlier. You are, it is, and I was getting confused with the phases of construction and the levels of charging. So this is level one charging. You're right. The, the level two charging is what you see more like when you're on the, the, those, you know, the rest areas on the highway where somebody pulls over for a few hours, charges up and keeps going. So you're right, this is the longer charging. And again, it's just the, the minimum. So I wanted to correct that, um because you brought that up earlier. So this is requiring level one, just as a, as a baseline. There are gonna be plenty of people who are, who will and who already are installing level two. But this is, this is level, level one.
And I appreciate that. And that's, that's why I asked for clarification, just so, you know, that folks won't think that they are forced to, you know, go hire. Even though it says it's two or three hundred dollars, those costs go significantly based on the, the contractor. Um you know, sometimes where you are is a few things, but it's good to know. So is, does that, does it say in the legislation, my apologies, that it, that this is only for level one uh installations?
Right, yeah, it, yes. Yes, there's a description, yeah, and the definition of what is considered electric vehicle um charging. And, and one thing too, I should say is, a- a- and if we're talk, I don't, are your questions about the, the residential or the, the commercial side?
They kind of go in with each other. If this, I, I would think of just this, if it was a mixed use building, let's just put it in that particular respect that we can hit both for us.
Okay, so um okay, and, and you're asking, so yeah, I mean, it's level one. So that, that's the answer to, to that question. And then in terms of, I'm hoping I answered all your questions about, so and the renovations for residential doesn't kick in until twenty twenty-four. Um so phase three resident renovations for, for like single family doesn't kick in until, till twenty twenty-four. Board Bill one eighty-one is dealing with phase three renovations for um for the multifamily. And that's twenty twenty-five, that those don't kick in. So we're just talking about new construction um i- in, in twenty twenty-two and then phase three for um and it's, and it's a little complicated because the, the commercial building code separates out the multifamily and um commercial. But it, I mean, so yeah, and I'm happy, I've got the charts in front of me, so I'm happy to try and clarify as, as much as I can. But, but the attempt here to, is, you know, to make this as easy as, as possible. And we're not forcing anybody and, and in a, in a single family or a duplex, three units, nobody there has to install any equipment. We're just, uh the, the code would require them to be E V ready. So to have that outlet ready to go. But nobody's being forced to install any E V charging equipment on the residential side.
Just, just the outlet.
Right, just the outlet.
Understood. And then, and we talked about
The connection to the panel box, you know, that, that just basic infrastructure. And that's what is, you know, our estimates are about, that's three hundred eighty dollars to, to put that in there. But then they don't have to, nobody's required to put in, for residential, um they're not required to put any installed actual equipment. That piece doesn't kick in until you're talking about um commercial and your larger parking lots.
Okay, I would, I certainly appreciate it. I think you've answered them, them uh very well.
Well, thank you for your questions.
No problem at all. Um there is, there's one last question that I, I do have. Um it's just this, because I'm, just wanna make sure I really understand this commercial piece. Um the, the way that I would like to. Um this is an hypothetical, um uh we have a, let's say, an instance in, in outside space. An amphitheater of sorts. Um and there is parking for, let's say, fifty cars or sixty cars um come twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So there is only, once again, clarification required one spot per twenty cars, um one, I mean, one uh E V charging station per twenty uh vehicle spaces, correct?
So you're, you're for twenty vi- for twenty spaces, you're saying?
Right. Is it, is that, or was it, because I heard two different one. I think the first time with the, maybe I'm getting the, the twenty twenty-four legislation confused with the, the twenty twenty-one. I think initially, um why just, what can you clarify that for?
Yeah, so, so in twenty twenty-two, if you're talking about a large event space, and I will say that um you know, I think casinos is one of the things that's exempted. So if you're talking about an amphithe-, you know, some, you know, depending on what sort of venue you're talking about. But if it, if it is um, you know, a large space that is, that is subject to the code. Um if you're talking about more than, so up to, so for a commercial space, so if they've got ten to thirty spaces, it's one E V ready space. So not any installed equipment, again, just having that, that outlet ready to go. Um if you're talking about thirty-one to forty-nine spaces, it's two E V ready and one installed. So they'd have one space with something else. And then fifty spaces and more, five percent of those spaces would be required to be E V ready. And, and at that point, as, as you add more spaces, the cost comes down. Because at that point, you've got, you know, the, the panel installed. You've got your conduit run and now you're just, you know, so the cost goes down per space as you add more of them. So it'd be five percent E V ready and two percent installed on a parking lot that's fifty spaces or more. So that large of, of, you know, that large of a space, that's what you would be looking at. Um yeah, and, and that doesn't go into effect until January twenty twenty-two.
All right, well, I appreciate it. Thank you. And I appreciate your work on it also. We, you know, we all need to try to figure this out. So thank you.
Uh all the one from the sixth. All the one from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't, I didn't have anything to say. I just wanted to make sure it sounds like a few of us have um an inability to raise our hands today. So I just wanted to make sure S T L T we realize that.
Okay, thank, thank you. Um all the woman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize clothes on Board Bill one eighty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um I, I'm excited that we are looking to, to pass this legislation. I think it's really going to move St. Louis forward. It helps us meet a lot of our energy goals. It addresses the air pollution issues that we, that we have in the city. So um I move that we uh perfect Board Bill one eighty-one.
Second. From twenty eighth, second about all along from thirteen, that you perfect Board Bill one eighty-one, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
That is the extent of Board Bill's part perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill one thirty-six, one fifty-nine, and one sixty-five.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent count.
Mr. President, please place Board Bill one thirty-six on the third reading calendar.
Madam Clark, please make note of that. Move Board Bill one thirty-six to the regular third reading.
And I move for adoption of a third reading consent calendar.
All right.
As amended.
It's been moved by Alderman from the uh twenty second by Alderman from the tenth. Any further discussion? Madam Clark, please call the rope.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderwoman Grass.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Twenty-eight, I vote.
I vote, you stay in motion, Alderman from the twenty-second and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, Portman Grossness.
Board Bill one thirty-six sponsored by Alderwoman Evans and ordinance approving a lighting study and a redevelopment plan for the North Newstead Avenue, Lexington Avenue, Whittier Street, Kennelley Avenue redevelopment area.
All along from the fourth, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill one thirty-six. All along from the fourth. All right, you have to unmute yourself. You have done.
Sorry.
You recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill one thirty-six.
Uh yes, I'm not sure of the words that I'm supposed to say at this time. If you will help me through this.
You, I just moved to a third reading, final passage of Board Bill one thirty-six. So just uh move to third read, passage of Board Bill one thirty-six.
Okay. I move that we uh go through.
Uh third reading and final pass, Board Bill one thirty-six.
I move that we move to third reading and final passage of Board Bill one thirty-six.
Second.
Second.
Move by all along from thirteen, saying about all along from the twelfth, excuse me, the fourth. Second about all along from the thirteenth to the twelfth. Move by all along from the fourth, second about all along from thirteenth and twelfth. Uh all along from the fourth, would you like to discuss the bill?
Yes, uh Board Bill one thirty-six will bring about uh much needed um development on these streets that have um not seen much development um for ye- in years. And, and by that, uh my lead developer is uh developing properties on these streets that will also improve, help, hope, hopefully improve um the community, improve the number of constituents in the ward, which is needed. Because at this point, I ward, my ward is slated for three public schools uh being closed in this area. So with the development to bring about uh increased um residences uh in this, in these areas, uh hopefully um this is showing the superintendent of the St. Louis Public School Systems that we are doing things to increase the numbers uh in my ward. So um I'm excited about uh having this development done and uh that's
Okay, thank you.
What I wanna say.
All right, thank you, all along.
I'm nervous, I'm sorry.
You're doing, you're doing well. You're doing excellent. You're doing well. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of board. With the Alderman from the fourth ward, you'll for a question.
Alderman from the fourth will yield a question to the Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, I will.
Alderman from the twenty-second, please proceed.
Yes, Alderwoman, is this your first board bill to be passed?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay. Well, I'd like to say congratulations on uh your uh introducing your first board bill and potentially passing it today. Um this board bill is a redevelopment plan and the way you use it is really the way that we should traditionally use redevelopment plans. Often times we see onesie, twosies for single family homes. But what you did is created a whole geography and you carved out many blocks within the fourth ward, which really gives developers an opportunity to, to come in and do the work that they need to do without keep going back to L C R A or S L D C for chapter um ninety-nine abatement for individual homes. So I just want to applaud you for using a tool in a very wise way. Um I'm excited for all the development that's coming along, the fourth ward. I was on the planning commission meeting this week. And I hear another redevelopment plan similar to this one is, is being proposed. So a- again, I just want to thank you and applaud you for all the good work. And I hope your board bill is successfully passing out the board of Alderman today. Thank you. Board of Aldermen today. Thank you.
Uh, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-third. Will the Alderman woman from the fourth ward yield for questions? For one from the fourth, we yield to Alderman from the twenty-third.
Uh, yes, I will.
Alderman from the twenty-third, please proceed. Well, it was going to be more of a statement. I, I, I recognize that was her first one and normal, normally, we would all vote against it. Then we bring it back. Bring it back.
That's what I heard.
But I don't know that everybody would get it if we did that. So I, I will vote with it, but uh, normally, you know, as your introduction, we would all vote against it. And then I remember my first one and I was standing there and I was so mad. I didn't get it. And I'm like, okay, don't pass it. Doesn't bother me. I just remember being so mad standing at my desk until they came back with have voted on the prevailing side. But you won't, you, you, you don't, you're not
We won't do that to her.
If we would have been in person, we could have probably worked this out. But anyway, congratulations on your first bill.
Thank you, Alderman Be Carroll.
Alderman from the nineteenth. Oh, hold on for a second. Alderman from the nineteenth. Alderman from the twenty-fourth. There you you're yelling.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, and I just wanted to, uh, commend the Alderwoman from the fourth on this. I'll certainly be supportive of this. I had the opportunity to, uh, to take a tour of the, uh, fourth ward with the previous fourth ward alderman and to, to see kind of his vision. And I know from, uh, speaking to him, uh, that he, he, he thought that you would do a great job of carrying on his vision of the fourth ward. And I believe that, uh, this is exactly the kind of, uh, development, uh, that, that he would seek there. And, uh, I think that this is a great bill. I'll certainly be supportive of it. And, uh, uh, if I was going to be counting noses on whether or not this was going to go through, uh, I'd say congratulations on, uh, getting this through. Uh, so that's all I have. Thank you again.
Thank you. Alderman from the nineteenth. Uh, you're muted, Alderman.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I also want to congratulate the Alderwoman from the fourth ward because as we all know, most especially, um, the critical areas of North St. Louis, it is very, very difficult to find agreement on areas to support for development and to get the ear of developers to come and invest in your community. So you've done the hard part and now you're moving forward for the reality to take place. And so, uh, it's a lot of hard work, but Thank you. I know you're up for it. And again, I, I wanted to compliment you, uh, sharing the information about how this will support perfectly increasing the population, uh, in a strong way in that area so that we can provide, uh, neighborhood school, uh, for those people who are choosing to build new homes, uh, and are moving to new apartments and condos, uh, in the city of St. Louis. Uh, congratulations again. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Alderman Davis.
Alderman from the twelfth.
Um, will the Alderwoman from the fourth yield questions, please?
Alderman from the fourth will yield a question. It's at Alderman from the twelfth.
Yes.
Alderman from the twelfth.
Yes, I, I yield.
Alderman from the twelfth, please proceed.
Thank you. Um, I just want to stand in support of Alderwoman Evans, my running mate, or not running mate necessarily, but my, uh, special election buddy. Um, congratulations. I'm thrilled for you and I'm really thrilled for the fourth ward. So moving on. Thank you. You're welcome.
Ald, Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will the Alderman from the fourth ward yield to question?
Alderman from the fourth will yield a question to the Alderman from the twenty-first.
Yes, I'll yield.
Please proceed, Alderman.
Why are, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Alderwoman. Why are you such a great successor to the late Alderman Samuel?
Why?
You don't
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that question again?
Well, thank you. Why, why are you such a great successor to the Alderman Samuel? You don't have to answer that. I want to congratulate you on getting ready to pass your first piece of legislation and being that it is a redevelopment, uh, uh, legislation that deals with redevelopment, you are definitely doing a fantastic job. And I appreciate you, especially being that the fourth ward and twenty-first ward are, are so close together and have such a close connection. I thank you for your leadership and congratulations, Alderwoman Evans.
Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
I just want to say thank you, Alderwoman Evans. I told you, you could do it. Congratulations on your first passage. I'm so excited about you. You know that. And, uh, I will be looking forward to standing by your side behind you when you cut that ribbon, sis.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Yep.
Uh, Alderman from the third.
I just would like to say congratulations also, Alderwoman Evans. I know a lot of times this can be a, a job that sometimes we're trying to make heads or tails of and trying to figure out how to get anything done that will make our constituents happy. So
Yeah.
um, congratulations in, in putting something together. I think our folks will be appreciative of, especially in the future. So good job. Looking forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you, Alderman Bosley.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Discussion. Congratulations, Alderwoman Evans. And, and as you heard, typically, if we were in, you know, in person, um, we would have been able to coordinate voting this down and then voting it back up. And the reason, the reason we do that is because we want to make it clear that nobody escapes this board without one loss. So we want, we want to, especially the new people, to get used to it right up front. Just get used to that one, one loss and the second one's a little bit easier. Uh, but, uh, uh, we would have voted it down, but immediately voted it back up. Uh, you know, uh, Alderman Be Carroll, when we did it to him, he was about ready to, uh, come, I mean, off to die as he was mad. But, but, uh, but congratulations and, uh, also thanks to the majority floor leader for having forethought to move this to the regular third reading calendar. So now I'm going to recognize you to close. You say whatever you want to say. And then, um, at the end, just say you renew your motion. So I recognized Alderman from the fourth to close.
I just want to say, um, this is a continuation of Alderman Moore's vision. Uh, he fores, he foresaw this and I just accompanied him, uh, in the, in the process of him saying, okay, he want this to be done throughout our ward. There was a reason for him dividing the ward in, in various sections so that we could begin some type of development in our community. And, um, I miss him. And, and, um, I'm just glad to be able to, uh, continue with his vision because this is what he was striving to do. And I'm sorry, I just
You did well.
I'm sorry.
You did well, Alderman. Thank you and congratulations.
And I, um, that's it. And I know I'm supposed to say I, I
Renew your motion.
I renew my motion.
Perfect. Um, um, Madam Clerk, please call the rope.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
No, I mean, yes.
Had to get it in.
Alderman Evans.
Uh, yeah, aye.
Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Mur, uh, I'm sorry, Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus. Twenty-eight aye votes.
My vote is stay in motion, Alderman from the first and third read and finally pass Board Bill one thirty-six. Congratulations, Alderman.
That is the extent of our reading report of engrossment.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills one thirty-six, one fifty-nine, and one sixty-five.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session of fix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the motion for the courtesy resolutions count.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, I'd like to move for us to adopt our courtesy resolution calendar.
Move by Alderman from the nineteenth and retain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second by Alderman from the fourteenth. And
I would like
Alderman from the twenty-second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Um, I would like to be a co-sponsor on Resolution eighty-two, not eighty-two, uh, Resolution eighty-six, sponsored by Alderman Kotar. It looks like, uh, Mrs. Dorothy Warren has been celebrated for forty-two years of service. She works on an exas commission. She is a wonderful
Dorothy is retiring.
She's a wonderful, wonderful person. Uh, I've never had somebody at City Hall that didn't have an attitude that was always willing to help. That is just one of the nicest people that you want to meet. If you've never interacted with her, I mean, it's just a true, uh, pleasure, you know, to interact with her. She's very helpful. She wants to show you how to get through the process and not a typical bureaucrat that just says no or I don't know. Um, I just want to really celebrate her and, uh, thank Alderman Carter for recognizing her. She's not in my ward, but I've interacted with her many times and her retiring is going to be a big loss to the exas division because she's a true trooper for the city of St. Louis. I, I want to congratulate and I want to salute her. Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion to put in bank?
Sure. If the Alderman don't mind, Alderman Carter, I'd like to move that we in bank Resolution number eighty-six.
Second.
Uh, any objections? A move and second by a lot of people, maybe nineteen, fourteen, twenty-third, there's a number of others, uh, that, uh, that seconded that motion. Um, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Um, add Ald, Alderman that are present today's names to Resolution eighty-six unless one contacted, uh, after the meeting, uh, to not, uh, to request that their name not be there. It's been moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close. Motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution eighty-seven sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, intention to establish O'Fallon Penrose Special Business District.
Uh, Alderman from the twenty-first, you recognize on first reading Resolution number eighty-seven.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I make the motion to send Resolution one eighty-seven to the Ways and Means Committee.
Uh, Resolution eighty-seven. It's been moved by the
eighty-seven.
It has been moved by Alderman from twenty-first that we send Resolution eighty-seven to Ways and Means and ten second on that motion. Second by Alderman from twenty-second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Resolution eighty-eight sponsored by President Reed and Alderwoman Davis condemning violent acts on the national, on the nation's capital.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on Resolution eighty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, could I request that the resolution be read because I think we need to have these words, uh, heard to all that are listening today, uh, because of its importance, and then I will speak.
All right. Uh, Madam Clerk, please read Resolution number eighty-eight.
Resolution number eighty-eight condemning violent acts on the nation's capital, whereas the city of St. Louis Board of Aldermen unites in condemning the violent acts and attempted coup that occurred at the nation's capital, the People's House, on January the sixth, twenty-twenty-one. Whereas on January the sixth, twenty-twenty-one, the Congress was set to certify the election results from November second, twenty-twenty presidential election. And whereas a group of elected officials, including President Donald J. Trump, were not satisfied with those election results and orchestrated a rally and objected to the certification of the election results in an attempt to stop Joseph Biden and Kamala Harris from taking office. And whereas Missouri Senator Jo, Josh Hawley was the lead supporter of the objection. Senator Hawley has openly and brazenly shown a disvile of the U.S. Constitution and the duties that are prescribed to his office. And Senator Howe sought to overturn the results of a democratic election and put partisan politics ahead of, uh, ahead of the country. I'm sorry, ahead of county. And whereas the rally turned into a riot on the Capitol Building, resulting in a lockdown of the Congress, significant damage to the building, and the death of four individuals. These acts were incited by the continuous and purposeful spread of misinformation by elected officials on the federal level. And whereas as elected officials, we are sworn in to represent the truth and to support and defend the Constitution. Regardless if we like the facts or not, the truth is the cornerstone of ethics and we have an obligation to the people to share their truth. And whereas we must condemn these actions and make it known that this elected body, the city of St. Louis Board of Aldermen, will not stand by and allow democracy to be put in jeopardy. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we condemn the actions of Missouri Senator Josh Hawley and those who incited and participated in an attempt coup on the nation's capital on January the sixth, twenty-twenty-one. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a formal copy to be, to be delivered to those deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this eighth day of January twenty-twenty, Honorable Louis E. Reed, President City, of the City Board of Aldermen, Honorable Marlene Davis, Ninth Ward, and Honorable Jeffrey Boyd, twenty-second ward.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
No, go ahead, Alderman.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Uh, one of the things that I'm going to start off with because I am still so very angry that I don't want to end up saying the wrong thing and are starting another problem here in the city of St. Louis by what I said. But I'm just going to be very basic today. You know, we were all born, we were all raised, we were all taught to be polite, we were taught to interact, and we were taught to try to love. we were all taught to be polite, we were taught to interact, and we were taught to try to love. None of that has been shared in the last four years of this presidency. Nothing that would be considered civil, would be considered caring, or would even on the least bit be considered, uh, a opportunity to have a coordinated effort between the two houses to get something done. So all those people yesterday have been put in a position to believe lies. They've also been put in a position to understand that no one knows anything about the government system or how to run it, or how we should move forward in the future. But someone, listening to someone who had no experience, should have never been in that office. And even at the point of knowing, after a couple of years, for sure that this person had an agenda that was not healthy for this United States of America, something should have been done before now. And all those who sit there and supported all this ridiculous actions that we have gone through the last four years, and less most especially put at the foot of this man, the death of almost four hundred thousand people. Because we all know, had he acted properly in the beginning, we probably would have only lost maybe, uh, a third of that number, if that much. But to take everything to the point where you stoke people, where they would come and not be who they probably normally are, and that's to protest, which is a wonderful thing to do when you have a message that you want to send out, it's a peaceful way to do that. But to come with so much anger and hate, because it's been put out there for you, and to tell you that you need to come and create havoc, you need to come and be destructive. You need to come and bring harm to human beings that are only doing their job. It is a disgrace. We should at no point ever have that here in the city of St. Louis. We should not get that far at any level of disagreement that would bring us to that point. It just should never happen. Now, we've had our challenges, but at the end of the day, it was bad. We've, we've had people hurt. But what I want to say is, it was not on the, that level. And I don't believe, at least I don't know it to be factual, any elected official who was stoking it to happen that way. So what we need to do is to, to make sure that we operate in a certain way from, for the future. And we need to make sure that we continue to condemn what took place. We need to not let anybody forget it. We need to push our elected officials, uh, on the state and on the federal level to put some things in place to protect those who have been, number one, elected to do a job, and then number two, to protect the citizens of this country. Because there were innocent people that lost their lives to some degree, and I don't think most of them signed up for what they got involved in. I know they didn't. And it, and what we have to do is to make sure that we have those things in place so that when it happens, people are charged to the furthest extent of the law, and we should send a message that we will not have that, not in the city of St. Louis, not in the state of Missouri, not anywhere in this United States of America. And my final word, sir, is to make sure that we give so much deference to the people who lost their lives, and I understand there's an additional person, uh, this morning, uh, an officer that was doing his job. It is just appalling. And I don't, I don't even know how we can be peaceful as we move forward for the near future until we know that we've done the right things to make sure that this doesn't happen again. And if it does, how to handle it. And so I thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to speak on behalf of this resolution, and, uh, I'll turn it back over to you, sir.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, so typically when I don't have anything nice to say, I try not to say much at all. Um, and I'm not wanting to, uh, uh, just spew bile, uh, here, uh, especially when I'm talking on behalf of, of my constituency. Uh, but I'm angry about this situation. I know that the vast, vast majority of my constituency is angry about this as well. The, the walls of our Capitol haven't been breached by an outside force since the War of eighteen-twelve, when the British were burning D.C. That's, that's where we're at right now. Um, a Capitol Police Officer was killed in this insurrection. This was an insurgency. This was terrorism. And, uh, eighteen U.S.C., twenty-three eighty-four lays out seditious conspiracy. This was sedition. This was an attempt to overthrow the government, and it should be dealt with as such. And, uh, I'm going to get off my soapbox now, but I would move, uh, that we pass this in bank, please.
Okay. It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Seconded by Alderman from twenty-second, that we pass this in bank. Uh, any objection? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Uh, make Resolution eighty-seven in bank. Alderman from the, um, fourth, Alderman from, I'm sorry, Alderman from the twenty-fourth, are you, are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. Yeah. Alderman from the fourth.
I was going to ask that my name be added to that deal as well. Uh, but, uh, Alderman, uh,
From the twenty-fourth.
From the twenty-fourth, embanked it, so.
Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-second.
I believe the Alderman from the eighteenth, uh, had his hand up before me. I'll use it, Alderman of the eighteenth.
Okay, I didn't see him. Alderman from the eighteenth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to say that, uh, we have, in our country, we have a mechanism set up to, uh, solve problems, and I want to go on record against any form of violence. Uh, we can, uh, protest peacefully, uh, and, uh, violently. Uh, and, uh, I would just like to say, um, we, uh, and the mechanism we have set up is we can also vote. So, uh, there was no cause for the violence that occurred at the Capitol, and my heart goes out to the, uh, fam- to the, uh, families that lost their loved ones, regardless as to, um, what their, uh, political positions were, they were following a, uh, demagogue, demagoguery. So we have to, as elected officials, make sure that, uh, we do everything in our power to not allow people who mislead the, uh, people through emotional appeals and demagoguery. And we must, uh, uh, oppose any form of violence and use the mechanisms that are set up. And when things don't go our way, we have to accept the fact that, uh, either we don't have the votes, or the voters didn't, uh, see our point of view. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I just want to express my disappointment in our Senator Josh Hawley from Missouri. Um, um, he certainly created an act that none of us can be proud of. Um, y- you know, our President of the United States is a very interesting character who's been stoking this kind of stuff for quite some time. It's amazing to me how many people suck up to him, if you will. Um, I, I find Josh Hawley to be an epitome of a, a psychophant. I mean, just somebody who's just totally praising somebody just to get to the next level. Um, we certainly expect more out of our senator. Um, the images that are going around social media with his fists up, you know, ready to egg everybody on is horrendous. Um, i- i- it reminds me of how we need to start thinking as a body of how we protect City Hall. I mean, this happened in the nation, the nation's capital, but this could also happen here in the city of St. Louis. So I think it gives us a reason to pause and think about public safety in a different way as relates to City Hall at twelve-hundred Market Street. Um, but I am proud and excited to go on record, um, to admonish Senator Hawley for his disgraceful, uh, participation in this act. Uh, I feel so sorry for the people who lost their lives. Uh, this should not have happened. Anybody who has served in the military, anybody who have served in law enforcement, you know, it's incomprehensible that something like this would have happened. And I personally feel it was a setup.
Oh, wow.
By a president, it was a setup by people like Josh Hawley, and it's sad. It was a sad day for America. And some people would say, this is not who we are. Well, I hate to tell you, yes, it is. You know, this is part of America. This fabric that we saw unleashed the other day is part of America. And the fact that they create these lies about the election, and many people in the black and brown communities where the target of war fraud was supposed to happen, that's an insult. But God is good because he delivered Georgia to the Democrats. And maybe that's a saving grace, and maybe we can turn this country around, and we can bring back stability to politics. And maybe one day we can really all in units to say, this is the greatest country on earth, and we are proud to be Americans. But what I saw the other day does not make me proud to be an American. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I, I rise in, in support of the, the resolution and the condemnation of our Senator Josh Hawley and his incitement of the crowd that tried to, or that did take over the Capitol Building. Um, I, I want to, I thank our newly seated Congresswoman Cori Bush for her leadership in calling out the discrepancies between the responses to, uh, peaceful protests and, uh, what we saw in Washington, D.C. Um, when, when black and brown people are protesting for their lives, they are met with militarized police. Even in our own city, merely holding a press conference on the steps of City Hall, the gates get locked immediately, security is there, the police are right around the corner. And I would say, um, City Hall, City Hall is pretty secure when it comes to, uh, protests. And so to call out just the discrepancy that our Capitol Building, our nation's Capitol Building was so easily overrun um, when it was majority white protesters, um, right, protesters, if you want to use that word, before they, before they started bashing in windows um, and invading offices of senators and, um, and representatives. Uh, just to call out those discrepancies, to thank our Congresswoman Cori Bush for her leadership in calling out, uh, the white supremacy of what we saw as well. Um, and I want to, want to thank this body for taking a stance against our Senator Josh Hawley. Um, and I hope that we, as a state, can work for better leadership. Um, I, I would urge also our governor to admit that this was inspired by, uh, our President Donald Trump and the rhetoric coming out of the Republican Party on a national level, and also here in Missouri. We had, uh, a state representative who was present at the Capitol, um, rather than being in Jefferson City where he was supposed to be. We have leadership at the state level that has said that they agree that there was fraud in our elections. They agreed withholding up the Electoral College process, even though Missouri's elections were, were free and fair um, and went in favor of the president and in favor of all of those folks. So calling out, uh, the, all of this chaos, all the way down to the state, uh, state representatives in Missouri, I think is very important. Um, so I'm glad to be able to stand with you all, uh, on this resolution.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, members of the board. I wasn't sure if I was going to say anything, um, because all honesty, I've, like many of us here, I've been oscillating between anger, um, rage, sadness for our country. Um, seeing what we have become as a nation. Actually, I'm gonna, gonna take that back. I think that we have always been this as a nation, and this is finally coming to a place where we cannot ignore it anymore. Um, the rhetoric that has happened in our country, um, again, the fear mongering against black and brown communities, the fear mongering, um, and red scare tactics that is used against people on the left in this country, including some of us at the Board of the Al- Board of Aldermen, needs to stop. We need to stop playing into some of these right-wing talking points. Alderwoman Rice, I think, brings up a lot of great points about the disparate treatment that we see even in our own community between different types of quote-unquote protesters and the types of res- police response that they are met with. Uh, our own police force and those in some surrounding communities have come under, um, increased scrutiny over the last six or seven years because of authoritarian police practices. And I know for so many of us, it was heartbreaking, um, to see how these insurgents at the state Capitol were met by police who literally opened the gates for them and took selfies with them when they were inside the Capitol Building. And seeing how different that is compared to those of us who have been out on the streets with the Black Lives Matter movement for years, being, seeing our friends and our loved ones tear gassed, have pepper balls shot at them, rubber bullets shot at them. This is America, and this is what we have been seeing, not just in Washington, D.C., but also in our own community. The other thing that keeps going through my head is, is what had happened if these folks had made it to members of Congress? You know, my heart aches for Congresswoman Bush and, and, and AOC and, and Speaker Pelosi. And I can't help but be frightened by what would have happened had, um, had these insurgents been able to get into their offices. And I know that many of us at this Board of Aldermen have gotten death threats over the years, have gotten, um, very scary communications that are sent to us. And I do think that we also need to think about our own safety practices in a Board of Aldermen. Because this isn't going away. Even when Democrats take the Senate and we swear in Joe Biden and Kamala Harris in a couple of weeks, the rot that exists within our country is not going away. And we are going to continue to see these attacks. I think that if anything, this needs to be a way to, to evaluate our own practices, to see how we can ensure the safety of our elected leaders while also calling attention to the disparate treatment in policing uh, against those in our community who have rightfully been calling for reform and justice for the last six years in very ongoing ways. And so I appreciate bringing this forward today. Um, I know many of us have been very emotional the last couple of days, um, and, and are, are scared and are sad for what is likely to come over the next couple of weeks, um, as our president continues to ramp up his rhetoric uh, around this election and spread disinformation. Uh, and so I hope that we can come together and, moving forward, help to change some of our local practices, help to make sure that we are supporting the rights of folks that have been out in the streets calling for justice for years, and putting an end to, uh, the racist rhetoric and red baiting, uh, that has been happening uh, to inflame some of these, uh, tensions on the right. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, now that we've embanked this, and I'm
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, now that we've en banked this and I'm a co-sponsor, I would simply ask that we uh, our clerk, send a copy of this resolution. I, I mean, I know it'll be in the minutes and maybe uh this will get some news coverage, but let's make sure we send a copy to the junior senator from Missouri's office in Washington DC, so he sees it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a very good idea. Uh, Alderman from the seventeen.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I um, you know, I applaud the resolution, complete support of it. Hadn't really planned on saying anything, but I do believe self-reflection is appropriate at this time. Um, it was not too long ago that elected officials from the city of St. Louis led crowds in protest uh to the steps of our mayor, uh had bricks thrown through her window, uh paint thrown on her house. Uh, and I can't imagine anything as intimidating as, as that is happening. Um, uh, and, and that was in response to a mayor, uh, I, I guess, an objection to the fact that we had a judicial process that we may not have agreed with uh that took place. And uh, I think it's probably a good time for all of us to begin thinking about toning this down a little bit. And certainly uh, that was just appalling uh what happened last week. It was uh, you know, it uh blemished our country's image internationally. And it uh, uh, you, you know, nothing like that has happened in our history. It, it's just a complete embarrassment, but um, you know, maybe we need to, to think about how we conduct ourselves as well. That's, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Uh, any further discussion, any further discussion? Uh, Alderman from the nineteenth, would you like to make a motion for adoption of Resolution eighty-eight?
Yes, Mr. President. Uh, I move to.
First, I request unanimous consent.
Alright. I was. Uh, I'd like to request unanimous consent for our resolution.
There are no objection, Alderman, Alderwoman, you recognize for a motion on Resolution eighty-eight.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, I uh just wanted to say a couple of words very quickly to close this out. Uh, we can never, ever look back and, and be comfortable with those actions that took place. I mean, never, ever. It cannot be justified. No matter what the occasion is, what the concern is about any particular piece of legislation or any action that is needed. That is not the way to accomplish it. And now I, I would like to ask for uh, to re, renew, ask you to move this bill.
Adopt Resolution eighty-eight.
I just got so mad, my head's hurting now. Oh, uh, adopt Resolution eighty-eight. Thank you.
Okay. By the Alderman from the nineteenth, uh seconded by the Alderman from the twenty-second. Uh, any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution eighty-eight. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Pose. For, for Alderman uh from nineteenth, I understand, and for a lot of the other Alderman people, I understand how tough it is because this is one of these subject matters where it just, it's just absolutely so far beyond what should be acceptable and, and, and right and just uh that it is, it's difficult to even sometime express, express your feelings because there's so much anger built up inside for. You know, especially for me as, as President of the Board, um, I can't engage in those discussions. So sometimes I'm sitting here wanting to say something, so I understand and I, you know, appreciate everyone's passion on this issue. And uh, this is not, uh, even though um, like the Alderman from the twenty-second said, it is what we are, is not what we're gonna accept. And we're gonna push back and people who stoke these fires need to be held accountable, plain and simple. This is not the way, uh, not something that we are going to stand by and accept in America or in the city of St. Louis, anywhere. So I thank you all. Thank you all.
That is the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading.
Resolution eighty-two sponsored by Alderman Calder and President Reed, Low Building Company in the city of St. Louis Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Alderman from the seventh, we recognize on the second reading, Resolution eighty-two.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to adopt Resolution eighty-two.
Second. Moved by the Alderman from the seventh, seconded by the Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? Alderman from the seventh, we recognize closed.
Thank you. I renew my motion.
And moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
That is the extent of second reading of resolutions.
Let's line us some unfinished business.
We have none. Announcements. Tuesday, January the twelfth, Neighborhood Development will have a meeting at nine AM via webinar. Health will have a meeting at nine, I'm sorry, eleven AM via webinar. Tuesday, January the thirteenth, HUZ will have a meeting at nine AM via webinar. Rules will have a meeting at ten AM via webinar. Friday, January the fifteenth, full board meeting, ten AM via webinar. That's it. That is the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to uh say that next week uh some very important Aldermen at the Board of Aldermen are having birthdays. Uh, so this is celebrity birthday. Shout out to my colleague from the tenth ward, Alderman Bomer, whose birthday is January the thirteenth. So happy birthday early.
Happy birthday, Alderman. He already got his, he already received his present uh, survived COVID. Twenty-second, you, you're done?
Yeah, yes, Mr. President. I'm done. Thank you.
Um, Alderman, Alderman from the twenty-third. Yes, uh, just want to make sure and announce that Thursday at ten AM, we're gonna have a public safety meeting. We're gonna hear board bills to twelve, two twenty-one, two twenty-six, and two thirty-two, which should be all the board bills that are assigned to the committee. There should be no left open board bill. So we will start at ten and uh, uh, board bill two oh three was assigned, but wrongfully assigned and being moved to a different committee. So two twelve, two twenty-one, two twenty-six, and two twenty-three will be heard Thursday, this Thursday at ten AM. Thank you. Right. Alderman from the tenth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. While I appreciate the Alderman from the twenty-second wishing me happy birthday, next Wednesday, the thirteenth, is also his birthday, my brother from another mother.
Oh.
Mr. Jeffrey Boyd, he says he's younger than me, but he actually looks a little older than I am. He has more gray, I believe, but thank you.
You guys' birthdays are same week and elected at the same time.
Same day, yes.
Same day. Well, congratulations to all. Alderman from the nineteenth. Uh, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. Uh, I just wanted to announce that uh tomorrow, Saturday, uh from ten AM to uh, two PM, we'll have activities at the Carver House. Uh, many people know that that has been a community center for a long time and it was closed. But the uh Sigma Fraternity House uh is now housed there. And they have programming that they'll be providing with STEM and STEAM uh starting this summer, if possible, to uh provide it in person, but most especially virtually. But we'll be doing a cleanup of Chambers Park and that area around it. They'll also be um, to have, providing free COVID shots and flu shots. You don't have to have anything. Just come and get it. Uh, we want to really encourage people because that's the only way we can have some kind of control over this pandemic. We've got to be extremely responsible, wearing our masks, washing our hands, keeping a social distance, and making sure that we get uh a flu shot and knowing whether or not we have COVID. So uh, I thank you very much. That's this Saturday from ten to two. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to excuse the Alderman from the fourth ward due to necessary absence.
Second. Hold on for a second.
First.
Did you say first or fourth?
First, really.
Oh, it sounded like you said fourth.
You said the fourth.
It must be my country accent.
It was a foreign slip.
Or, okay.
We're keeping an eye on you since you did that to the Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Alright, so it's been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-second that we excused Alderman from the first. Entertained the second on that motion, seconded by the Alderman from the fourth. There we go. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries.
No.
Uh-oh. Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I. Adjourned. Adjourned, right?
Yeah, you both adjourned, sorry. You got me started. That was the first.
It seemed like both of us are getting a little old here, right? Um, Mr. President, members of the board, I move to adjourn until Martin Luther King's birthday, next Friday, January the fifteenth, at ten AM via webinar.
From twenty-second, seconded by the Alderman from tenth, and somebody else I did not catch. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. We stand adjourned. Thank you all for all your work today. See you next week.
Okay.